Marty, that 10 minutes went fast.
Yep, I think Joel's ready to start. Okay, good morning and welcome to the Minnehaha Commission Meeting for May 20th. I'm going to call this meeting to order and note that we have a full quorum of commissioners. We have Commissioner Benega present telephonically. Again, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, call the roll.
Blenberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye, motion carries.
All right, moving on, our consent agenda, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any item on the consent agenda? Is there anybody from the commission that would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Okay, look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve with a comment, just to point out that about 70% of the bills for this week were state motor vehicle collections from the month of April, which is common, it's something routine for us, but that's the vast majority of our bills and about, let's see, 1.5 million of the bills is for public safety expenses this week.
So that's about 100% of the bills.
It gets pretty close.
Yep, all right, call the roll.
Mr. Kerski. I'm going to abstain from the consent agenda vote.
All right, so Commissioner Benega will be abstaining from voting on the consent agenda, so I have a motion, I'm still looking for a second.
Second.
Motion from Heisey, second from Heisey. All right, call the roll.
Blenberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye, motion carries.
Moving on to our regular business, we have our first item is a Second Judicial Circuit Court Annual Presentation, and we have Judge Howman and Carl Toons from the Circuit Court. Good morning.
Morning, I think I always have to relearn how to use the PowerPoint here. Somebody... There you go, it's PDFs, you can just scroll. Okay, all right. Good morning Commissioners, Robin Howman, presiding judge for the Second Judicial Circuit, which is Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm going to reserve most of my time for any questions that you have, but we'll just give you a couple of quick updates since the last time I was here. The legislature last year did approve the funding for two additional circuit court judges in Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. Those judges were appointed by the governor last fall, and that would be Jeffrey Clapper and Mandy Maury. So we have 19 judges total now in the circuit again. We do have Judge Hoffman, who is retiring. There's been an update since this PowerPoint was sent over. He was originally going to retire in October, he's now retiring in July. So we will be without a circuit court judge probably for about three or four months. The Judicial Qualifications Commission isn't set to interview for that position until the beginning of August. So we anticipate maybe September timeframe to be full staffed again. Judge Eric Johnson was promoted from the magistrate bench, and he was replaced by Allison Nelson. And that's also an additional change since I was here last year. Just a quick overview of our state court circuit or caseload distribution. Again, Minnehaha County is about a third of the cases within the state of South Dakota. For the fiscal year '24, we had 58,000 cases filed in the Second Circuit. That distribution breaks down to this chart here in Minnehaha County. You can see there was a dip in about fiscal year '23 that is increasing the last two years. You can see in both our civil caseload as well as our criminal caseload. We went up from 53,000 cases to 55,000 cases is what we're projecting for this next fiscal year. Some of the projects that are currently underway, as you know, we have some construction going on next door, trying to accommodate the growth in not only our judges, but that caseload. We're converting our fourth floor law library into an additional courtroom. We're converting two court reporter offices into a judicial chamber, as well as kind of rightsizing two magistrate court offices on the third floor. And we do expect to have some state folks move out of the building within the next couple of months. We've been housing a Supreme Court Justice and some law clerks, as well as one other staff member. And so those individuals will move out to the one-stop shop here in a couple of months, and that'll free up some additional space for us in the courthouse. We also have the Juvenile Justice Center, which will move, once the JDC facility is complete, that will house our juvenile courtroom, as well as have space for a juvenile judge. So our recommendations for our budget for 2026, really very minor budget changes. A couple of changes increasing some of the funding, particularly related to court-appointed attorney's fees. And we've recommended some decreases, all of those specifically outlined in our budget package. And one of the things we always talk about when we come here is our records project. We've been talking about that the last number of years. We have a large off-site facility, and we have been very judiciously and expeditiously, I think, going through some of that record storage and trying to reduce that over the next couple of years, looking at scanning a bunch of documents and getting rid of documents that we actually don't need to keep any longer. So with that, I'd open to any questions that you might have.
All right. Judge, we always take public comment before we go to questions, so if anybody's here from the public, we'll take public comment. I don't see anybody running up, so I open it up to the commission for questions.
Mr. Chair, I can begin. Judge Howman, very interested in the progress on the Juvenile Justice Center and just your perspective on your juvenile docket, how you see that growing. We're considering certain options that, you know, shell space for a second courtroom or additional offices. Maybe that doesn't come to fruition for 10 years, but that vision for a juvenile campus.
Sure. One of the things that we do foresee is particularly an increase in court services officers. That was a request that we made to the legislature last year to have an additional court services officer for juvenile cases specifically, as well as a secretary for when we move into the Juvenile Justice Center. And we anticipate that that's going to be what our request is for the legislature again. Having that added person on staff isn't going to change our footprint out there, once we move into that facility. But we do definitely see an increase in the need for court services officers before we would foresee the need for that additional courtroom. I can even give you a timeline for when that might be possible, but my understanding is that the planning is looking at shelling out that space, not only for a courtroom, but additional expansion for court services. And I would foresee us needing that expansion for court services before we would need an actual courtroom.
Because right now you have just one judge assigned to the juvenile docket, so one courtroom is sufficient.
Yes.
But if in some future state that grew, it's, some shell space might come in handy.
It could come in handy, yes.
Commissioner Blenberg.
Thank you, just one quick question. The dip in cases in 2023, would that be COVID-related, or do you have any idea what would cause that?
I can't tell you what would cause that. It was a dip in both our civil and our criminal cases. I don't know that I could relate any of that to COVID. It could just be differing goals by the police department and sheriff's department as far as what types of crimes they were pursuing at that time, but I can't give you a specific answer.
Thank you.
Looks like we're good, Commissioner Heisey.
Mr. Chair, just one quick question as well. Morning Judge Howman.
Morning.
Has the nature or complexity of the crimes over the last 10, 15 years changed all that much? And what can we kind of expect in the next 10?
I think anecdotally, I can tell you that there's been an increase in more violent crime, and from our perspective, more violent crime related to drugs. And we see that as well with our juveniles. I can't give you any specifics, but anecdotally, that's what I would...
As the kinds or types of drugs being used changed? Is it more heavily on meth or fentanyl, or has that changed very much?
I would say in our perspective, it hasn't changed that much. Meth is still the number one drug that we see in cases. We do have an increase in fentanyl, but meth is still king, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, all right, thank you Judge.
All right, thank you very much for having us.
All right, moving on, our State's Attorney's Office Annual Presentation, Daniel Hager, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, rest of the commission, Daniel Hager, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. Always fun to be up here, talking with each of you and the public as well. It was a challenging year last year. We have, when fully staffed, 40 lawyers, 34 support staff. This commission is no stranger to the turnover challenges that we had. Again, I've talked to this body about, I suppose, the good parts of that, when you have individuals who are getting elevated to a circuit judge position. You know, that's fun to see. We've had lawyers joining the Attorney General's Office in important roles, right, leading some of those departments. So I'm happy for them personally. That leaves caseload and just holes in the office that are difficult to fill. And even as you have some of those experienced lawyers moving on, we have younger lawyers coming in with that zeal for prosecution. It takes us time to train them, so the office moved forward. I'm proud of them. They really stepped up in those areas where it needed to happen. The work that we do is very important to public safety, it's important to county government, and so I am very proud of them. Some of our core missions that we've really just tried to embrace, high-level prosecution, recruiting, training, and retaining talented individuals, and then that innovative use of taxpayer funds. Certainly as we see the budgets gets tight, we have to make sure that we're using those amounts in a way that the taxpayers are proud of. So I think I'll scroll down here, high-level prosecution. We always try and look at those statistics, see what stories are they telling. I'm disappointed this isn't the PowerPoint had really cool animations, so. Felony crime growth, 1% growth, misdemeanor 14, so 11% overall. That was unusual in that what we've seen in the past six, seven, eight years has been more felony growth than misdemeanor growth. We had some years where misdemeanor filings were down, and this maybe goes to what Commissioner Heisey had asked Judge Howman about the complexity we had been seeing, you know, the past 10 years, and Judge Howman is absolutely correct, the complexity, the more violent crime, and driven by drug use. So last year was kind of an anomaly in that we saw a majority of our growth be misdemeanor crimes. I mean, that can be marijuana possession, driving under the influence, other driving offenses. That lack of felony crime growth, again, it still grew, so it didn't reduce, but overall, we're talking about just under 1,000 additional cases, 11,324 adult criminal filings last year. That's a lot of work that's being done by the deputy state's attorneys in the office, and again, they're doing it well. But when you're short-staffed in the office, we are prioritizing those high-level cases. And often what happens when we have a felony attorney that leaves, someone from the magistrate team moves over. So it's unfortunate that as we're struggling with some of the staffing challenges, to see that misdemeanor crime also growing. So that misdemeanor team really worked hard. I know that there were a lot of stressful moments, but again, I cannot speak highly enough of all the individuals in the office, but certainly that magistrate-level team, they were filling empty seats and, you know, not being rewarded any other way, other than knowing that they're serving the public. So when you look at some of that crime, again, felony crime is still 33% of our cases in Minnehaha County. That's higher than it is statewide, that kind of makes sense, just given the penitentiary that is here, the parolees typically stay here. I talked about how there was an increase in misdemeanor files. Homicide was just absolutely an outlier. We talked last year, stood up here and said, hey, we had one murder. You know, one's too many, but what we had done with that time, we'd resolved other high-level cases, and so we knew that we were going to be ready inevitably when homicide spiked. That happened last year, it hasn't really slowed down yet this year. But those cases get our attention. We had reorganized the office, we had felony teams, we were assigning them to judges. Judge Howman had talked about getting two additional circuit judges from the legislature, making sure that we're staffing those appropriately. But that reorg helped us be ready for those homicide cases. They take a lot of time, right? You have at least two lawyers for the prosecution side. Typically, you have two defense lawyers, you have investigators, law enforcement time, court time, motions, hearings. So that represents a lot of work that's going to be done over the next year, two years, as we work to resolve those cases. Some of them end up in trials, but we were ready, and I'm glad that we were. When we have some of those high-level cases, I want to recognize the good work that is done. State v. Darian Johnson, Darian Johnson had a trial on his shooting and killing of Kayshon Tyler, he was convicted. That case had represented a lot of what we're seeing in the county. You had domestic violence issues in that, we had a self-defense claim, so there were prior motions hearing in front of that circuit judge, litigating whether he would have immunity with self-defense. Ultimately, he did not, and he was convicted at trial, but it was a lot of work. And so I am proud of Melinda and Christian, who got those convictions, the VWA, who helped victims and victims' families through that entire case, but they deserve recognition for that. Recruit, train, and retain, again, I don't think it's entirely unique to Minnehaha County, I know it's not. Individuals are struggling to find and keep high-level talent. We certainly struggled with that, but we've embraced it. We've looked for creative ways to make sure that we can continue to build towards just a successful office and serving the public well. Two of those efforts, the Prosecution Practicum, that's a partnership we have with the law school. We have law students who are coming in, they're spending an entire semester in the office, learning what it actually looks like to prosecute a case in Minnehaha County. It's very hands-on, they're very talented law students, and it helps identify, in my mind, what future lawyers are interested in prosecution. So certainly that helps while we're investing into them and making sure that they are future lawyers who understand prosecution. I'd love to see them work in the office. That then is starting to also turn into an alternative pathway. There's been a lot in the press about this. Minnehaha County and Pendleton County are main offices that are going to support this new initiative, but it's creating a way for current law students to, again, spend another semester solely in those offices. We will have students who are going to spend an entire semester in the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office. They will have a Dean Certificate, so they will be able to do actual prosecution in court. We're obviously going to supervise and not just throw a bunch of files their way. But ultimately, if that semester goes well, they can express interest in staying employed in public service. If we also are interested, we can offer them a job. They would be able to have an alternative pathway to licensure. Right now, lawyer graduates, law school, they have to take the bar to be able to practice. With this public service commitment and kind of a mutual understanding, there'd be an agreement to work for, at a minimum, two years in the office. They would not have to take the bar if that's the right fit. So these are efforts, I hope to see this kind of grow from Practicum to Alternative Pathway and help us continue to identify lawyers who'd be good prosecutors. The next effort, this is one that I've been really excited about. We've talked about the vault and files and paper files for years, but those top pictures, we had just an old vault in the State's Attorney's Office, we were able to get those files out of there, we were able to go paperless in 2023. We've transformed that into a trial advocacy courtroom. Last year, the commission had supported Tom Hensley kind of retiring from his chief criminal role and keeping him on in a part-time training role. This is going to be a space that we're going to use to make sure that the lawyers who are coming into our office are those premier trial attorneys. We've already started, there's a National District Attorneys Association, they have a trial program. We've started offering that in our office, we don't have to send people, we have enough lawyers in-house where they're going through that. We've had witnesses who've started to be prepped in this courtroom setting. It will be a tremendous thing for juvenile victims. When they have to ultimately testify in court, that is a horrible experience for them. And so to have moments where we can set them up in a courtroom setting without the pressure of everything that's going to come ultimately when they're actually in court, that's going to help that child, right? And that's going to help us get good results, it'll help that child move on and understand what it's going to feel like to be in court. So I'm really excited about this. There's a lot of really neat possibilities with this, we've talked with other partners. They've expressed the interest in coming in, doing some joint trainings. The feds were talking about maybe doing this in their office as well. So I think it's a good idea, and I appreciate the support that the commission gave with this. That furniture was made by Pheasantland Industries in the penitentiary. Phenomenal work, just good craftsmanship, so just proud of that on a lot of levels. Innovative use of taxpayer funds, early diversion, we're trying to save resources, enhance technology, saving that time. We've partnered with the Attorney General's Office, that helps free up bandwidth in our office, while partnering with them, and then legislative efforts, making sure that we have clear law that lets us fight our cases in the right way. With that early diversion, we had 408 successful diversions last year. Obviously, this commission understands what that brings into the county, the hundreds of thousands of dollars supporting that from the state. We've partnered and we're working currently with Think 3D and the Boy Scouts, trying to figure out how to reinvest some of those amounts back into diversion so that it snowballs. Adult diversion, 309 participants, we've had 219 successful so far. We've had about 22 that have not been successful, but the rest of those are currently going through it. So that's a good program as well, and we're seeing just the benefits of that. 85 individuals who completed that program have stayed crime-free after a year. That's good, right? We've struggled with repeat offenders, so to have individuals who are successfully completing those programs, that can be going through treatment, it can be getting jobs, it's a wide variety, but that'll pay dividends for the county going forward. Enhanced technology, we talked about the Vault Project and going paperless. We're working on an interface with the current law enforcement database and Prosecutor by Carpel, the case management system. They're getting really close to having that finished, they're working through the bugs, but I anticipate that that would, with the legal office assistance, reduce some of the work time by 40%. That'll let them start to work on other areas, getting paperwork ready for court, things that are time-sensitive. It also slows our need to grow that division, you know, so as we're looking at how to spend property tax, are we able to slow the growth that we would need? New partnerships, I talked about this a little bit already, the Attorney General's Office is handling the court side of the specialty courts. When we were struggling with staffing, they stepped in, so I appreciate that partnership. It's going well so far, they have a retired judge who stepped into that, so she had some experience with specialty courts prior to joining the Attorney General's Office, so she'll be a natural fit. Legislative efforts, on the, what I would call, the negative side, the legislature did reduce ingestion of controlled substances from a felony to misdemeanor for the first two convictions. Commissioner Heisey, when you asked about drug-fueled crime, I mean, that's what we see. Turning that down to a misdemeanor, I hope that it has its intended effect. I think that we need to look for ways to discourage methamphetamine use, discourage fentanyl use. That bill had tied into it the potential, under the law, for specialty court and hope probation. I hope that we don't look back five years and say, boy, that was a really bad bill. I suppose I hope the same is true for the next bill, because my office helped write and pass that Senate Bill 116. That was the racing bill. Certainly, this community has had a lot of issues the past few years with unlawful racing sanctioned or unsanctioned racing that was taking place on our streets, they were taking over streets, we had deaths that were occurring. You have to be safe in your streets, our kids are driving it. My son's learning how to drive right now, and that's terrifying as it is, but just to know that other people are complying with those laws that we have, it has to be safe for the community to drive on, so I think that Senate Bill 116 will help promote that. Additional staffing requests, I've talked with this commission about that. With the challenges we had in staffing last year, this body had allowed us to overhire. We do have some talented lawyers who are going to join the office, one started yesterday, and then we have a couple others, but I do anticipate asking for two of those to be converted to full-time positions. We've already identified them, we've recruited them in, and so hoping that they can join us full-time. I am very proud of just the lawyers, the support staff in this office. Starting my second term, I'm humbled by, I guess, the work that I get to do. I love working with all the department heads, we have a lot of talented departments, the Auditor's Office does a nice job making sure that my budget numbers look right and I've put the right numbers in the right cells. Obviously, the commission is very supportive. I enjoy working with Public Defender's Office, Public Advocate's Office, the Sheriff's Office. I mean, everyone chips in in a really good way, and it is truly an honor to work for the county. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Anybody from the public want to comment on this briefing? All right, Commissioners, questions for Mr. Hager? Mr. Blenberg?
A comment and a question, just, we've been hearing for a while about the caseload in your office, and I just want to pass on the appreciation to your staff. You take every opportunity to tell us how much work they're doing and how well they're doing and how dedicated they are, and I hope they know that you're an advocate for them and that we appreciate the work that they're doing for the public. And then my question would be, with those, I think I heard you say at the beginning, you have, to be fully staffed, is 40 lawyers and 34? Is that, does that include the two overhires?
It does not.
Okay, and so where are you at now and what are your needs today?
That's a bigger question than what am I asking for for staffing, probably. Juvenile crime is growing, in the future, I anticipate having to add an additional lawyer to that, just looking at what the current staffing for their caseload, we're seeing complexity, we're seeing homicides committed by juveniles. I do see that area growing. We're working on filling out that fifth judge docket, those overhires are really going to help with that, Judge Song's docket on the circuit level. Victim services, victim witness assistance, we have that grant-funded position, I'm hoping that that continues. But I can see that area growing, just as we have more complex cases, victim cases, having to reach out... victim cases, having to reach out to them. Our digital discovery team has been understaffed for a little bit. They, again, this is where seeing individuals get really neat opportunities in other areas. One of our digital discovery technicians was a former detective, and he ended up getting hired to a federal-level investigative job that's really neat for him. Leaves a hole in our ability to get all that digital discovery, get that evidence in. We have another individual who's going to start in June, Craig from the courthouse. So again, I guess I'm stealing and leaving holes elsewhere, but so they're behind in their ability to download the videos and the digital evidence, right? They're about, well, there are a lot of cases behind right now. So in the next few years, I anticipate either trying to find some technology solution for that, or that area will have to grow. It's a fine balance, right? Trying to spend taxpayer money wisely, but also realizing that, well, the work that we're doing is very important to public safety. Those two lawyers, again, would help with that team. Our charging grand jury team, I think, needs immediate help, so I would hope to move someone there. We had some young lawyers who just passed the bar, we went three for three, that's great. And so I'm excited to see their careers begin. I know that in the future, we're going to have retirements, we're going to have other individuals, there's an open judicial vacancy, those are attractive spots, so people will be interested in that, and you never know. But it's, it's hard to predict exactly what's going to happen in crime, you know, in 2023, certainly we saw that dip. There was a big spike in that year of felony growth, misdemeanor went down. It's hard to predict those, but unfortunately, I think that we will have crime, it will continue to grow, but we'll continue to have those conversations. I don't have a clear answer for you, but I see a lot of areas for growth in the next few years.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to just emphasize the infrastructure you've built in collaboration with the law school with the, between the practicum and then this alternative pathways. So when we're talking about projecting new FTEs in the future, you have a much more predictable, is it fair to say that you have a much more predictable pathway? And when would those first graduates in that path, is that, are they class of 2026 down in Vermillion that would then work for you? And also, we shouldn't forget, your counterpart at the Public Defender's Office is also participating in that, so this is helping us with both prosecutors and defenders.
Yeah, I agree, and Tracy has done a nice job. She, for the prosecution practicum, she has the defense practicum on the other side, we're both participating in the alternative pathway to bar admission. Let me step back, the prosecution practicum, the first year that we offered that in partnership with the law school, we had three students who participated in it. One of them went on to take a job in Tracy's office, and then one of them accepted a position with me, and then another one using this over hire. We were able to recruit her back from Texas, she had gotten a job prosecuting down Texas, so she's coming back. So that first year, the three students who were in that practicum are now employed by Minnehaw County. This last group, we had seven students in the practicum, three of those are interested in the alternative pathway, so we've offered that to them. So we're going to have three, that'll start this fall, I think that Tracy's having two, I don't want to steal her thunder, I think she's presenting is it next week? But again, you just see those very similar tracks and that similar recruitment. So we'll have three this fall, and potentially you'll have three individuals who may be interested in working in public service and hopefully Minnehaw County. I think it's a natural way to start with practicums and then identify, okay, are these good students for an alternative pathway? Do we want to continue to invest in them? Are they something that we can get value out of in the future? And I hate to talk about a person that way, but hopefully the answer's yes, and hopefully they continue to want to work in public service.
Yeah, I'd just add the comment that built a pretty good relationship with Dean Fulton down in the, at the law school in Vermillion, and I think he speaks highly of your office and endorses Minnehaw County, both prosecution and defense. I think Minnehaw County is seen in the legal community as a great training grounds to learn a lot. Unfortunately, the converse side of that is maybe they only stick with you for three to five years and go on to other things, but since we know that that's a given, that we're going to lose some people on that three-to-five-year mark, we've got to stabilize that pipeline at the front end. So now I think you've got both of those, you're developing great talent, and they're going on to bigger, better things in some cases, so that's, that's great in its own way, but we have to have that other side of the equation, and I think you have that now. So I like seeing these practicum and this pathways program, I think it's going to help us with budgeting going forward to say, hey, you're asking for a couple FTEs, where are these people going to come from? We're having such a hard time hiring from the law school. Well, now you have an answer to that question, so I think it's going to be easier to support you for FTEs in '26 and beyond, because you'll have that pathway. So I appreciate that.
I agree with you. I also think that the practicum and alternative pathway gives that chance to start training them earlier, so that by the time we hire them, they're hopefully able to run a little bit faster than they aren't now, because otherwise, we're bringing them in and we're trying to train them for a year, two years. This lets us start that process while they're still students, start getting them thinking about how we do things, and so it does give us an advantage.
Mr. Heisey?
Mr. Chair, I also share my colleague's perspective, I think the practicum is a great program and excited to see what comes of it in both your office and the Public Defender's Office. I do have a few questions, Dan. Do we keep track of recidivism locally, and how do we sort of compare to the state as a whole?
Yeah, we've, we've started to look for ways to use our statistics to do that. It would be a lot of data entry to figure that out, but what I've started tracking, and again, we moved to a new system in 2023, we're going to start tracking that based on Part II informations that we file, right? If we have someone who comes in on a felony charge and we file one of those habitual offenders, that's not necessarily a crime that they committed here, but we know that they had a prior felony conviction. That'll, same with some misdemeanor offenses that can be enhanced, simple assault, disorderly conduct, DWI. So we will have a way with statistics to track that. What I can tell you is, when you have someone who's coming in and we're opening those files, it's rare for us to see someone who's never committed crime before. Now, we're in a position where individuals who are paroling out of the pen, they're staying here because they're, maybe the bed that they're going to sleep at is going to be in Sioux Falls in Minnehaw County, the treatment that they're receiving is going to be here. So we have a lot of individuals from elsewhere in the state who are coming, serving a portion of their sentence, getting out here, they're committing more crime, I mean, that happens. Yeah, I don't have great statistics on that, but it's happening.
A couple of additional questions. I understand there's a sizable amount of parole violations, which returns those individuals back into the system. Do you see any way to reduce that number? That certainly adds to the caseload.
Well, that's hard. When you look at, and this has been a discussion on the prison task force, which I'm on as well, when you're looking at parole violations, technical parole violations, parole violations can be a missed appointment with your parole officer, right? That's a violation of that. The problem with technical parole violations, that can also be absconding, right? So absconding is not complying with anything, essentially running from that. It can be positive UAs, so it can be your parole officer catching you using drugs, using methamphetamine, using fentanyl. It can be, under their definition, the commission of new crime. So it could be a Class 1 misdemeanor, it could be a DUI, it could be an assault, it can be a felony conviction. And so parole violations take a toll on Minnehaw County, they take a toll everywhere. The, you'll have individuals who are shooting at our law enforcement officers, and they're on parole, okay? That's, under their definition, a technical parole violation. So I think that you need to have good supervision, right? If we have a system that's working well, when we are coming into contact with individuals for the first time, we are trying to divert them from a life of crime. When they're getting convicted, they're being supervised by probation, we need to hold them accountable, we need to make sure that we're not creating a culture for them of noncompliance and of future crime behavior. Once they ultimately get convicted and sent to the pen, and that's not happening on first-time offenses, when they're getting out, we need to have parole supervision as well. So it's, it can become very overwhelming when you look at first-time offenders, you know, individuals who have repeat offenses and they're a drain on probation resources, individuals who are ultimately getting convicted and going to the penitentiary, and then parole supervision. There's a lot of work that has to be done, but yeah, it's good supervision.
Absolutely. I wonder if you could speak to the various diversion programs that the office entertains? And what's the general philosophy or perhaps standard, you could say, when determining whether someone should go through those programs or spend their time in jail or prison?
Yeah, what we're looking for with juvenile diversion, you're looking for, and I think the general philosophy with juveniles and adults remains the same. How can we intervene at this point in a way that stops them from coming back? You know, with some of those kids, it's sitting through programs that are encouraging effort in school, talking to them about the perils of drug use, of criminal behavior, trying to get them through treatment. On the adult side, those are early offenders that we're targeting. By the time someone's coming in with six, seven, eight felonies, we're not trying to offer them treatment tracks, right? Like, they've obviously had those opportunities with probation or previously offered, but what we're seeing with adult diversion, again, is those early offenders, trying to get them connected to treatment, trying to get them to abstain from drug use. All of those adult diversions are tied to substance use. That's just an area that we've targeted, so all of those cases, the 300-plus had a connection to substance use, which again, is not, it's not hard to find, but trying to get them to a point where they are breaking free from those substances, they're providing clean UAs, they're working. We've had some adult diversion where it was an individual who was 18 but was still in high school and was starting to fail high school the final semester of high school year. So our diversion involved a plan where he would meet with his teachers, come up with a way to get passing grades, and we weren't even asking for a grade, right? Let's just come up with a plan so that you're not in this boat in the fall where you're going to retake part of your senior year. And so that, that's what that was, right? He was providing clean UAs, he ends up passing high school, that's a better citizen for us to live with. So that's, that's kind of the philosophy. There's a lot of programs, happy to get you information, but again, partnering with Think 3D, where they're using, I guess what I'm going to poorly call like corrective thinking and talking through some of their programs there, the Boy Scouts with the Y Try. You have a lot of people who are trying to invest in our youth, invest in diversion in our community, and I think that's a good thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Benning, do you have anything? Can't hear you if you're talking, Gerald, sorry.
No, we're good.
Putting them to sleep, I talk too long.
Okay. I doubt it. All right, I guess I have one or two questions or comments. Technically, a parole violator is a responsibility of the state. I mean, they're on parole from the state pen, and if they violate parole, you get to prosecute.
It, it depends on what that violation looks like. Certainly, if it's a new crime that's happening in Minnehaw County, we're prosecuting that. If it's, I suppose that's where they can come up with the, the technical parole violation, right? The parole board can handle some of those, they can handle some of those violations, but in those instances where it is crime that's being committed here because they've paroled out here, that's a burden on us.
Your office, Public Defender, the Sheriff's Office, et cetera, et cetera. County is growing, the, you know, community is growing, things happen. Commissioner Blumberg had asked Judge Hellman about, you know, what happened, why were things down maybe in 2023, and, you know, public business owners want more enforcement of trespassing laws or whatever, which puts more people in misdemeanors and increases. I mean, it's, we're trying to do the right thing for, you know, the people that obey the laws, but it increases our, our work. Saturation patrols, DUI, I mean, those things, again, more business for you. Highway patrols adding eight or nine new highway patrol officers to the area. That's an exponential factor to the amount of work that you do, the Public Defender does. And we're going to see here in a couple of agenda items how public safety and criminal justice is, you know, 50% of our budget seven years ago, and now it's 70% of our budget. The rest of our budget has stayed flat. So I mean, but that's what we need to pay attention to. And I don't know if you want to comment on that or not, it's just my observation.
Well, I agree with you, and certainly the, as all of these pieces get moved, there's reactions, right? You talk about the highway patrol being placed here, that, that's a good thing, right? Like, it's a good thing that we have a new unit. Certainly, that will bring additional tickets, additional cases, hopefully it brings with it additional deterrence. Again, I'm not a speeder, I learned my lesson in 2004, but when you are on the interstate and you're watching people speed, nothing causes them to break faster than seeing that trooper sitting there in the median, right? And so that visibility, I think, is a good thing. Yeah, we will prosecute and try and prosecute as well as we can the cases that come to our office, but you're right, those, all of those things grow, the work that's needed to be done, and that's okay. All right, we've got, again, good, good people in, in the county.
And that's where we're spending the money, so, yes, sir. Thank you. All right, moving on. A first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on an ordinance amendment to Ordinance 1991 as amended, providing for the imposition, collection, and enforcement of wheel tax in Minnehaw County. Morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioner Jacob Morris, Highway Department. Coming before you today, looking for support to increase our wheel tax. Couple different options, we've talked about the last few meetings. Option number one would increase the wheel tax $1 for the initial four wheels and an additional eight wheels for a total of 12, with a maximum fee of $60. Option number two would leave vehicles under 6,000 pounds, what they are today, and just increase to $5 a wheel over 6,000 pounds. Option one generates about $1 million a year in revenue to go towards highway, road, and bridge. Option number two is around $190,000, where that leaves the highway budget, the five-year plan that I put together and, and submitted for our budget, years 2026 and 2027, regardless of what wheel tax does, those, those years are set and, and well-funded. It's the, it's the out years and having enough in reserve in the future, that's, that's in question. If, if we don't do an amendment to the wheel tax, projects in '28, '29, and '30 would just get moved out, the highway fund will remain solvent, it's just roads won't be as well-maintained, and there may be some more posted bridges here and there. Just to put those, those two increases in perspective, option one is about a 6.8% increase in, in highway department revenue. Option number two is about a 1.3% increase in, in highway department revenue. Got it? If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to try to help answer them.
Okay, we'll take public comment before we go to questions. All right, we'll go to questions. Commissioners, comments, questions on the two options or, and/or maybe a third? And just for clarity's sake, we have to schedule a second reading for this at an upcoming...
Public hearing and commission meeting?
Yep, at an upcoming meeting. And we can propose forwarding... And we can propose forwarding either of these, but at the second reading, we could still change it, correct? If we wanted to? So if we, I'm sorry? It could be amended at that time. So doing this would basically at least move the discussion forward, and it could be amended at the second hearing. So I'll turn it to the commission for comments, opinions. Commissioner Isie?
Mr. Chair, morning, Jacob.
Morning.
We're looking at option two, just to get a sense of how much 6,000 pounds really is. Would that figure include, say, a Ford F-150 and other similar work trucks? Or rather, are we talking about large commercial trucks and other larger vehicles? And the average driver won't be expecting to see an increase in their fees, correct? If we opted for option two?
Yeah, Commissioner Isie, the, the 6,000 pounds, the 6,000 pounds is roughly about what an F-150 would weigh. So that and above, the commercial vehicles would, would fall into that category. SDCL limits us to what weight ranges of vehicles we're allowed to apply the wheel tax to, and 6,000 pounds is the top end.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I got a couple objectives here. You can correct me if I'm wrong here, Jacob, but if one of our objectives is getting to a $5 status for big grants, do both of these scenarios help us with that? We would achieve the $5 status and we would get all the corresponding points on any of our grant applications, is that correct?
Yeah. The South Dakota Bridge Improvement Grant allow, gives awards points in their scoring system for wheel tax dollars that have been assessed. So right now, we're at $4. Once we go to $5, either of these scenarios count, we get an additional two points towards our, our scoring criteria for the grant.
Okay, that's helpful. And then I believe from your prior presentation, are all of our adjacent counties following option one, I think all of our adjacent counties have a $5 wheel tax. It's just maybe they have some differences on the max of how many wheels they go up to, but most of the counties around us are $5 per wheel, $60 max. Is that fair?
That's accurate. Lake County, Moody County, Turner Lincoln are all maxed out at 5 and 60 total. Cook County is $5 a wheel for $20 total.
Okay, that's helpful context. Thank you.
I can't make a motion. I personally would favor the option B. I, I do feel we have to do something, and I, a large portion of that opinion is weighted towards the big grant and being able to get that extra money from the state program. So just based on that. And the other thing is option B, I don't think would impact 80% of the, the drivers. I mean, it's not going to affect the minivan or the grocery getter or whatever. It's gonna, most families won't see an impact. This is gonna be more, and Commissioner Isie, I Googled it, an F-150 weighs about 6,200 pounds, so, yeah. So I think most light trucks even are going to be moved up to the $5 wheel. But I, again, my own opinion would be option B would be the way I would lean at this point. So look for a motion to set a second hearing date.
I'd make a motion to set the hearing date for the second reading, and how do I word that? To go with, I would also agree with you, option B, thinking that the vehicles that are incurring the most damage on the roads see that extra dollar a wheel and looking forward to the extra points on the big grant.
So your motion is for a second hearing on...
Second, Benega.
Third or June?
June 17th.
June 17th? Okay.
That is my motion.
So we have a, for option B, we have a motion by Commissioner Blinberg for June 17th. Commissioner Benega, did I hear you second that?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll just throw my two cents in there. I, I think my main priority this year is to get us up to the $5 for the big grant funding. I would just throw out a marker that I think as we do another five-year plan and look at some of Jacob's out years, I think the actual revenue generating aspect of this is gonna become more real, and we might have to revisit this in, in a coming year and go like some of our sister counties to the, the full $5 across all 12 wheels. I guess, oh, and then the other clarification I would note is just as the public is considering this, we have this worded in such a way that any change would take effect January 1 to correspond with a calendar year, so changing this midstream isn't really fair to people's letter of the alphabet, I think is what month you renew your registration and whatnot. So we would start fresh in January of 2026. But, so just giving a signal to my colleagues that I maybe leaned a little bit towards option A, as we're calling it, but I'll, I'll support the motion for option B.
Additional comments? Call the roll.
Blinberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Isie?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. We have a briefing on the alcohol beverage license compliance check failures. What did I miss? Oh, okay. Consider bid results and award recommendations for Project MC 2316, Highway 146, Culvert Rehabilitation, and authorize the chair to sign an agreement that will, the agreement with First Rate Excavate Incorporated. Bids were open May 7. Jacob?
Morning, Commissioner Jacob Morris, Highway Department. If you don't mind, first I'd like to introduce Jenna Gerard. She was recently promoted to Assistant Highway Superintendent, and I would like her to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jenna Gerard, Highway Department. On May 7, we received three bids for a culvert rehab project on our county Highway 146. It's also 26th Street. It's between Veterans and Sixth Mile Road. It's a small project, we're just removing eight sections of the culvert on each side of the road, creating a new, new bedding for it, reinstalling those pieces and then tying them together, and then installing riprap and regrading the ditches. Of those three bids we received, there were no bid anomalies, and we are recommending award to First Rate Excavate, who was the low bidder.
All right. Public comments on this agenda item. Questions for Jenna? Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll congratulate Jenna as well and make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Commissioner Benega, do you have a question?
I guess not so much a question as an observation, but the significant gap between the low bid and the other two is incredible, and hopefully they haven't made a mistake, but certainly going to approve what we have as a summary currently.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Call the roll.
Kipli?
Aye.
Isie?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blinberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Now we have a briefing on the alcohol beverage license, license compliance check failures. Kim?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Christiansen with the Auditor's Office. Our office was notified on May 8 by the Sheriff's Department that they had completed a compliance check of 62 licenses holding either a full liquor license or malt beverage license in the county. There were a total of three licenses that failed the compliance check. Out of the three that failed, only one of them, Red Rock Bar and Grill, is currently licensed by Minnehaw County. Red Rock Bar Grill and Casino owns a retail on-sale liquor license, and for just your information, the other two licenses are local, are licensed through the local municipality. Due to the compliance check, the county will be required to hold a public hearing upon the receipt of the renewal application this fall, which usually will occur in November. Our office has sent a letter to the licensee notifying them of the violation and the requirement of the public hearing this fall. And also, for your reference, this is the first failure by the Red Rock Bar and Grill has had. And I did some checking, there were 13 county licenses that were checked and 12 of them passed. And the license will expire at the end of this calendar year, and Captain Phillips with the Sheriff's Department is here, should you have any questions.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, questions? Comments? Commissioner Isie?
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious, Kim, year after year, how many establishments fail the test? Seven, one or two a year, pretty common, or?
Captain Phillips here with Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office. So I've been doing the liquor compliance checks with the Investigations Division, and so when I first started probably doing those 12 years ago, it, it was pretty common to have a higher number, and we've done stuff with the Sheriff's Office, our deputies go to like every liquor store, convenience store, anything they can to promote this from not happening, and that's why we're doing it. The state statute states that we shall, and so we're, we're trying to prevent this as much as possible. Last year, in November, we had two. Previous years, we've had seven or eight. We've worked with the Department of Revenue to try to promote some of these things to, their turnover is so high, maybe in some of these establishments. Department of Revenue has some leadership courses for businesses to utilize a lot of the convenience stores and other stuff, have the scan part of the ID. That, that doesn't prevent them from doing it, but it's one more mechanism to help assist in that. Our numbers have went down drastically over the last couple of years. Commend the 59 businesses that did pass. We'd love to see zero, we're getting closer, so hopefully we can keep promoting this. And the Department of Revenue has done a really good job, I think, also of, of trying to advertise and get as much info out to these clerks so they can prevent this from occurring.
What does it look like on the ground? Is, is someone being sent in, but that's under the age of 21 with an ID, or?
So we usually get individuals that are maybe looking to get into law enforcement, or we, we have some relationship with them, they're over 18, under 21, and then we, we go through some, some different guidelines. We're not there to deceive or do any of those things. We just, we always tell them to present the ID. You know, they'll go, whether it's a gas station, go, go pick up something, they'll go, they're never trying to be deceitful, always give the ID of the clerk, what age they're gonna tell them, and so we're not trying to trick anybody, and I think our practices are followed by other counties when they call and ask how we do it. And so typically, we do it two or three times a year when it fits within our schedule and we have the personnel to do it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blinberg?
Thank you, I have a question for Captain Phillips, too. Do you, the, the two that were in municipalities, assuming that we oversee those, what about the city of Sioux Falls? I know we work together on a lot of things. Do you patrol, or do you perform these checks in the city of Sioux Falls, or are those municipalities out in the county?
Yeah, so the PD does all the ones in the city. We hit any outliers outside of the city. We do Brandon, Hartford Humble Crooks, Valley Springs, all those, and then we contact those municipalities, whether it's the mayor's office or somebody within their jurisdiction to let them know, so then they'll do the proper hearings like we are today with those establishments. But the, the city and their detectives do anything in the, the city limits of Sioux Falls.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Only one failure, and maybe that's a terrible way to put it, but it was their first violation. When a business fails, is it a citation that's issued? Is the person that sold the alcohol arrested, or they just cited? What's the process?
So when we send somebody in, the individual that bought will come out, give us all the information, then we'll send one or two detectives in, and they'll be cited there. And then we try to talk to any management to let them know the processes, and then we usually will answer some phone calls from that establishment the following day, and so they're just cited. If individual was under 18, we would never send anybody in under 18, but then that's a different criminal matter and they could be arrested for that. But all of our individuals that we send in are over 18, under 21, and the citation is issued to that clerk.
And what's the citation amount?
Furnishing alcohol...
Dollar amount?
It's usually not the dollar amount, they have to appear in court.
Oh, okay.
So they have to appear in court, usually within that month timeframe.
And all they have to do is check the ID?
Yep, and so we're, with the scanning, most establishments have that scanning app. The vertical is usually under 21, and so there's a lot of things in place that just, you know, these establishments are busy, but they're, we need them to check this, and that's why this is mandated by the state, and we're trying everything we can to prevent this from happening, so.
Thank you, Captain. Commissioner Benega, anything?
No.
All right. Moving on. Consider a motion to approve or deny the 2025-26 malt beverages in South Dakota Farm Wine License Renewal Applications. Kim?
Good morning, Kim Christiansen with the Auditor's Office, again. We have received three more renewal applications in our office for the 2025-26 licensing year for malt beverage and SD Farm Wine License. Each entity listed below on the memo has submitted the proper application and license fee. These were reviewed by the State's Attorney Planning and Sheriff's Office, and any objections or concerns were dealt with on any needed application. Renewal fee for each entity is $300 with 150 staying with the county and 150 going to the Department of Revenue. Again, there are no limits on the number of this type of license that can be issued to the county. The current licensing year is active until June 30 of this year, and these businesses did pass the latest compliance check.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, turn it to you for questions or action.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. We're gonna have a roll call vote. Call the roll, please.
Isie?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blinberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. All right. A briefing on the FY '26 county budget cycle. Gonna get real busy.
All right, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So yes, this is just a briefing. We're not gonna get into the details of the FY '26 budget or even look at actuals from previous years. What I wanted to do is give an opportunity to provide you with an overview of what the next several months will look like, and some things to think about as we go into this budget cycle. What I think you'll find by the end of my briefing is that, is that it's very similar to previous ones, but there are some things I do wanna highlight here. So we'll just start off with the timeline, first of all. You know, certainly, we are, we're approaching June, so that's when your budget meetings start. June 10 will be the first one, and traditionally at that one, it's scheduled at 9:00 AM. You'll dive into, with a briefing from primarily Susan, the county's overall finances and what the budget actually looks like and what is proposed. But it's gonna be a busy month of June, and certainly in July as well, where in July, the commission at a certain point will need to file their provisional budget with the county auditor, and then after that, in August, we'll have joint meetings with the Sioux Falls City Council to consider some of our jointly funded items, and then in September, you'll go into actual budget hearings themselves, provide an opportunity for the public, and the public, again, is always invited to, to speak on all of these items, but the actual budget hearing will be held in September, usually over the course of three weeks as we get feedback from the commission and make any other changes that are based on new information. And then, of course, that budget will go into effect on January 1st of 2026. But some things I wanted to just highlight and have you keep in mind as you're looking at the budgets over the coming weeks, which will start making information available to you within the next week, and certainly for the June 10 budget meeting, all that information will be provided online for the public. But just one thing to think about is our county organization. So it's not easy to make a county organizational chart for Minnehaw County and probably a lot of other counties out there. The fact of the matter remains that the county commission has oversight directly of 12 different departments within the county. And in addition to the county commission, there are five elective offices, each one a department in their own right. Just highlight over here, the, obviously the Sheriff's Office has the jail under them, and then on the bottom right here, we have various other organizations that we have a relation... on the bottom right here, we have various other organizations that we have a relationship with and do fund to an extent. Now, one thing I do want to point out is that a lot of these organizations that you see on here are required by laws. As a matter of fact, 90% of our spending, just looking at the 2025 budget this year's, 90% of our budget is statutorily required. What I mean by that is that everything we do is obviously authorized and derived from state statute. But 90% of what we're putting our expenditures towards are shalls. So, we shall do something... We shall provide for not necessarily a jail, but someplace to send criminals. We shall provide for public defense. We shall provide for elections, so on and so forth. So, there's not a tremendous amount of wiggle room in terms of things that we as a county are actually taking on. And then, down on the bottom there, you can see some other items that we've categorized elsewhere, but I think it would be very safe to argue that the categorization and certainly the expenditure of funds on those other items are certainly essential to our operations and our ability to carry out all of our functions. So, for example, when you look at operational or contractual needs, there we're looking at things like human resources, information, technology, so on and so forth. Those things that we need to support the operations and the things that we do on a daily basis. When we look at our expenditures, and I think you'll see the same trend again going into the 2026 budget, there's several different functional areas that these are broken down into. And I do just want to add a quick note here that all of this data that I'm providing to you today can be found online on the finance page of the Auditor's website. We share it every year in our recaps and also in the budget itself. But if you look at this, the one thing I want to draw your eye to is this middle set of columns here. This is '21 through 2025 budgeted expenses. Again, I'm not pulling in actuals here. But what you can see is that public safety and justice really take up the lion's share of our expenditures. As a matter of fact, a little over 50% of our total expenditures across all 15 funds is geared towards public safety and justice. When you look at just the general fund, that's about 70% of the general fund. So, our public safety and justice, that includes everything from the sheriff's office, law enforcement, jail, coroner, down to the courts, what we provide for funding to the courts, public defender, public advocate, and state's attorney, juvenile detention center. There's a few others on the list, but suffice it to say, that is a large portion of our budget. The other thing that I kind of wanted to draw your attention to is that when you look at our general services, our human services, highway, and these other categories over here, I'll get to the capital outlay in a moment, you can see that they... With the exception of highway, in this particular case, in the last few years, they generally stay flat. So, that's something that you've heard in several of the briefings that you've gotten from departments over the last several months. You'll see it again. When it comes to our general services, when it comes to human services, generally, we stay flat. And also, when we're looking at outside agencies, the funding that are provided to those organizations and cultural and miscellaneous things, for example, like our museum, parks, et cetera, those typically remain flat. But where you see the steady increases certainly are in public safety and justice. So, that's one thing to keep in mind. The other thing, when it comes to our overall budget and our expenditures, typically, when you look at the budget as a whole, again, all 15 funds, I think we generally see about 45 to 50% of those funds put towards personnel. So, we're a very people-heavy organization. We rely on them to do the work that needs to be done, the things, those functional areas that you see up here. When you smoke... When you look into the general fund itself, that number becomes more like 70%. So, a lot of numbers that I'm throwing at you, but I think the key takeaway is that there's a huge investment in public safety and justice. Again, we don't control crime, and so certainly, we adjust to some of the things that are going on in the community and also just the cost of doing business. But there's also a big investment in people. And you heard in previous presentations earlier as well that that's always a key priority for department heads is to make sure that we retain and bring on the best qualified personnel to provide the services that are provided by the county. Just over here to the right, I just want to explain those outliers there, some capital projects. In particular, in 2024, this is the Juvenile Detention Center. It's an accounting thing, but we received $47 million for the bond or $50 million for the bond. Forty-seven of it's in there. I do want to emphasize again that we did come in under budget when it came for... When it came towards contracting out for the actual construction of the center. But then, we start looking at our resources. So, how do we fund what we're doing as a county? Again, I think you're going to see the same general trends as we go into the FY '26 budget cycle. What stands out here certainly are property taxes, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But also, we do have a reliance on cash applied, have not had to dip into it to the extent, really have not had to dip into it in recent years, but we do budget for it. But also, other revenue sources. So, these other revenue sources are intergovernmental transfers or funding mechanisms, things that are based on fees, back taxes, so on and so forth. So, these are things other than property taxes or the use of our cash on hand. And you can see that it's been fairly consistent. There's been some increase in recent years. But one of our challenges and the thing that we deal with is the fact that we're carrying out a lot of work, you know, obviously for the county, but also for the state. And so, our county relies on about 99 different fees. We track 99 fees. Up until yesterday, I'll tell you, it was 92. Commissioner Heisey pointed out that we have seven others in the coroner's office, but we track those fees, 62 of which are county-driven fees. So, the commission has the ability, and in some cases, the department has the ability to adjust those fees. And we do our best to adjust those fees sensibly and certainly in accordance with inflation. And then, the remainder, about 37, are state-driven fees. And you heard earlier, Commissioner Blenberg just pointing out on our county bills report earlier in the meeting, you know, we collect a large volume of money downstairs, particularly in the Register of Deeds and the Treasurer's Office, but a good portion of that money goes back to the state and rightly so. But some of those fees have remained fairly stagnant over the years. And I will say, some of our county fees probably require an evaluation as well because some are a little dated. It's always probably a good practice to make sure that we're keeping up and maybe not entirely funding the work that we do, but keeping up with inflation and making sensible choices there. And then, property tax overall, certainly, that's been a big topic of discussion, certainly something that's always been on the mind of commissions as we go into budget season. It's not taken lightly. But I do want to point out here that it does take up the lion's share or assumes the lion's share of our funding for the things that we need to do. But I do want to point out that this chart is just for Minnehaha County. So, for your average taxpayer, just don't forget that they live in other jurisdictions as well. So, it may be within a city, within a school district, within a conservation district, so on and so forth. So, this here is just the county snapshot. As a matter of fact, based on some numbers I looked at earlier, statewide, the share of county property taxes overall, in terms of what folks paid throughout the state in 2024, was about 27%. In Minnehaha County, we're a little lower than that. I think looking at the last year of reliable data is 2023, and that's from a report put out by the Department of Revenue. In 2023, our share for county taxes was 18%. So, right here within Minnehaha County. But just keep these things in mind as we go through the budget process. The last thing, just informationally, well, among the last things, informationally is a little further dive into property taxes and how it works. Because, again, this is something that's been a big topic, certainly something that the commission is interested in. While you do the best that you can to minimize and manage expenditures, certainly growth and CPI inflation and the number of people in town or in the county increase, and it needs to be responded to. So, I just wanted to kind of talk about our tax structure, property tax structure, real quick. In orange down here, that's basically... We start out with a certain capability in terms of property tax. And that's, I shouldn't say that's our starting point. Our starting point is the budget, our expenditures, finding out what we need to do as a county to get through the next year. But to fund that, when it comes to property taxes, we look at last year's taxable revenue payable from property taxes, and that's increased by a factor associated with the CPI that cannot exceed 3% and also growth. And that in 2027 cannot exceed 3%. And this is based on a statute that was passed in 1996, started in 1997. So, in 1997, we started with a base tax rate of about $9.8 million. And each year since, we have been authorized by statute, and I don't believe all years have met the maximum or we haven't met the maximum. But each year have... The property tax base has grown by CPI and growth. Again, CPI has been capped since 1997 as well. So, for any shortcomings that we have as a county in terms of meeting notice expenditures, up in the non-shaded area here and the dotted line here are our total expenditures, budgeted expenditures over these years, those... That funding comes from other sources, those things that I mentioned earlier, either cash applied or fees, et cetera. And then, whatever is missing, the commission is forced into a position of having to consider opt-out. And that's what this blue line is. And we don't adjust opt-out by statute with CPI or growth. But this is just a graphic showing how the county's funding and kind of some of the things that go into the decision-making process. So, just hitting on growth and CPI real quick. Certainly, CPI has been capped since 1997. This chart goes back to 2005. You can see that there are several years where CPI is over 3%. So, those orange lines above 3% are basically unrealized revenue. And that's been made up in one of a wide range or in one of a limited number of ways, one of them being opt-out and others, you know, possibly some other revenue sources. And then, growth for property taxes, that too is added. You can see not as much of an impact, but for us, it still does matter. Last couple of years, we have seen growth above 3%. I'm pointing this out because SB 216 does put a cap on growth in 2027. So, we'll see sort of the same scenario that we've seen with CPI, whereas there's unrealized revenues from growth. So, just to wrap up here, I know that's been a lot of information. Some of the things that department heads have looked at, that the commission continually emphasizes, is just maintaining that continued focus on responsible budgeting and good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Public safety and justice needs, those aren't changing. They'll remain a priority, and I think you'll see the trend go similarly to past years. We do rely on other revenue. So, as I mentioned before, those other sources are very important to funding the operations that we have as a county. But at the same time, the goal and also commission policy is to make sure that we maintain that 25% reserve balance within the general fund. And by all indications, we're certainly on track to do that. Long-range planning and forecasting, we continue to do that. You'll see Susan get up here in June, talk about that, and we'll revisit the forecast probably every time we talk to you about the budget. But we're looking out at least five years to make sure that we maintain a healthy fiscal situation for the county. And then, of course, consideration of SB 216 and our long-range planning. I mentioned that, you know, we discussed the growth on... The cap on growth, that's certainly something that'll go into effect in 2027. There are other provisions of the bill, particularly the expansion of the elderly freeze and also the assessment or the cap on overall assessments. We're still learning a little more about SB 216 and implementation. We'll have more information about that as we get into the budget hearings and certainly as the year progresses. But we will keep our eye on it, and we do know that it could potentially have an impact on the county. But as in past years, we'll start first with a good, realistic budget of expenses and find or identify the best ways to fund that. And subject to your questions, we'll see you back here again on June 10th to talk budget more.
Public comment on this agenda item. Comments? Questions from the commission? We got a meeting scheduled for June 10th, 17th, and 24th, I believe.
Correct.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
All right.
All right. We're at the opportunity for public comment. Anybody who want to address the commission about any non-agenda item? All right. Commission liaison reports.
Mr. Chair, I can lead off. We had a planning and zoning commission last night. We had two different short-term rental proposals come up in the joint jurisdiction with the city of Sioux Falls. One was approved and one was denied under our still relatively new ordinance, trying to find our way in conditional use permits for which situations that's going to be allowed. I would not be surprised if one or both of those are appealed to the joint city council and county commission. So, you'll get to share in my joy. But I think that's all I have. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
All right. I'm just going through my agenda to see what I have done in the last week or two that I should be sharing. Commissioner Heisey.
Mr. Chair, just one quick comment. The software that we recently approved for the public defender's office, I spoke to Tracy about that. They're going to be onboarding their staff come June 4th. So, excited to see what comes of that over the long term.
Yeah, exactly. Commissioner.
Thank you. Just wanted to comment that the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance bus tour last week was an excellent opportunity for commissioners and other members in the county to tour a lot of facilities and towns and parks in the county. Thank you to SMGA for that work that they put in. And I think my highlight was touring the fire truck facility in Lyons. That was impressive. And then, also, just wanted to comment that the Just Home Steering Committee met and we're continuing to work towards the transition with the process leaving county responsibility and moving on.
Okay. All right. Moving on to non-action commission discussion. Moving on then, we have an executive session, so I'd look for a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law 125, 2, 1, 3, 4, and 6.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Heisey.
Aye.
Blenberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. We will enter to executive session next door. Thank you for your attendance.